Paul, we're going to get started with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Mike Meeks is the pastor at Lakeview Park Church of the Nazarene. He's going to lead us in the invocation. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilman Greiner if he'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance. But at this point, would you please stand for the salute to flag?
Almighty God, we pray for your understanding and wisdom this day and every day over each leader of the Oklahoma City and all support personnel as they put forth committed creativity, energy, and yes, even risk in the forming the policies and infrastructure of this great community, a community where its singular objective is the growth and opportunity for all of its citizens, citizens who are engaged and contribute in the quality of life in the place we call home, Oklahoma City. Where the servant leadership of those who do lead us, may we all walk together, work together, and together witness Oklahoma City's continued greatness in the days, months, and years ahead. This we pray in the strong name, nature and presence of Jesus our Lord. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It is Mental Illness Awareness Month, and we have some advocates here today to draw attention to mental illness. Norman and Faith Stewart are here with Charlotte Collins. Why don't you all come up? We have a proclamation. I'll ask the clerk to read it as we get settled.
Whereas in 1990, the U.S. Congress established the first full week of October as Mental Illness Awareness Week in recognition of the efforts of the National Alliance on Mental Illness, NAMI, to raise mental illness awareness. Whereas good mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and since all Americans experience times of difficulty and stress, prevention is an effective way to reduce the burden of mental health conditions. There is a strong body of research that supports specific tools that all Americans can use to better handle challenges and protect their health and well-being. Even though mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our nation and state, six out of 10 adults and four out of 10 youth in Oklahoma do not receive needed treatment. Whereas with early and effective treatment, those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full, productive lives. Whereas every citizen and community can make a difference in helping end the silence and stigma that for far too long has surrounded mental illness and discouraged people from getting help. Whereas public education and civic activities can encourage better mental health outcomes and help improve the lives of individuals and families affected by mental illness. Now therefore, Mick Cornet, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim October 1st through 7th as Mental Illness Awareness Week in Oklahoma City.
Let's show our appreciation to this group of people who are drawing attention to such a noble cause. Siti Adair has joined us here, and Norman, I'm going to let you talk about some of the support groups that you're starting and moving around the city. And I know we're trying to get everybody on the same page and educated on the issues and how we can help.
Yes, we have, as the mayor just mentioned, a number of groups that meet regularly, not only in Oklahoma City but throughout the metro. Charlotte here hosts a support group that we run in Midwest City. We also have a group that meets out in Mustang. In Oklahoma City, we have one at Crossings Community Church and one at Integris Baptist that meets on a regular basis. If you know of someone that might be interested in getting some help, that has someone in crisis in their family, a NAMI support group would be a great place for them to start to learn some things about mental illness and how to help their loved ones. You can go to the NAMI Oklahoma website, namioklahoma.org, and they have information on all the support groups available on their website. Also, next week during Mental Illness Awareness Week, we have several special events that will be going on. One will be October 3rd at Festival Marketplace up in Edmond, and we'll have Kyle Dillingham there, violinist, playing. He does some amazing things with some broken violins that I think you'd enjoy seeing. That event is free. It will be from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. on October 3rd. We'll have a, what's it, an auction, silent auction. That's the word I'm looking for. And so it'll be a good time. And if you do come, bring a lawn chair. It's an open market. But again, free event. On October 4th, Outback Steakhouse is going to give us 20% of all their proceeds. They'll donate that to mental health organizations. And finally, on October 7th, Oklahoma City Metro affiliate is hosting an awareness and awards banquet, and one of the honorees is going to be Jeff Pierce, your Oklahoma City CIT leader. So quite a few things going on, not only here in Oklahoma City but all over the state. But I think just if you're in the metro, those are the big events for us, along with the support groups that we mentioned in Mustang, in Midwest City, in Oklahoma City, and in Edmond.
So online, more information at nami.org. It's N-A-M-I dot org. NAMI Oklahoma. Let me do that again.
If you do nami.org, you'll get national.
Okay, I see. NAMI Oklahoma dot org. And this appreciation is to show our support for your efforts. Thank you very much. Thank you. Next, we're going to discuss Disability Awareness Month, and we have many members here from the Mayor's Committee on Disability Concerns. They're going to come up and turn around, and of course, everybody braved the rain to get here this morning, so we appreciate everybody's patience with Mother Nature. All right, we have a proclamation. I'll ask the clerk to read it.
Whereas the month of October 2017 is designated in the United States as National Disability Employment Awareness Month. Whereas leaders and citizens of the city of Oklahoma City, by fulfilling the MAPS-3 projects, are constructing new sidewalks and other facilities that will be disability-accessible. Whereas the mayor and city council are implementing a broad ordinance requiring ADA-accessible sidewalks on all new and renovated major and minor arterial streets. Whereas Oklahoma City's Americans with Disabilities Act coordinator, Keith Wilkinson, and staff work daily to implement the city's ADA transition plan and to assure that the city's programs and facilities are accessible to everyone. Whereas our city needs the knowledge, skills, talent, and productivity of all of our citizens with disabilities to help build our city and energize our economy, and Oklahoma City residents with disabilities deserve the opportunity to work and have full lives. Whereas the theme for this year is Disability Visibility in 2017. On October 24th, the Oklahoma City Mayor's Committee on Disability Concerns is providing a special seminar on ADA accessibility and will host the 27th Annual Awards Luncheon, which honors outstanding people with disabilities and persons and entities that support their well-being. Festivities will also honor area student poster artists by displaying their artwork created to help raise awareness of the progress for people with disabilities. Now therefore, Mick Cornet, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim the month of October as Disability Awareness Month, and Tuesday, October 24th, as Special Disability Awareness Day in Oklahoma City.
Let's show our appreciation. The American with Disabilities Act has made the United States a worldwide leader in this area, and of course, with MAPS-3, Oklahoma City is one of the cities in the United States that's doing more than many to provide the ability for people to move around the city seamlessly. And I know there's a lot more to come, and we're now kind of moving into an era where the private sector is getting more and more involved. You're starting to see architects and engineers and home builders starting to get more involved in this area. So the United States continues to be a leader in this area, and I couldn't be more proud.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We appreciate all that Oklahoma City has done for people with disabilities, especially the MAPS-3 program, and the citizens of Oklahoma City for passing this last bond issue, which will continue the good work we started. And lastly, thank you for all the work you have done for us, as this is your last time up with us.
That's right. That's right. I appreciate that very much, and I will see you all at the luncheon that we have in about a month. And we'll honor a lot of people around Oklahoma City who are investing their free time and their spare time, and sometimes their full-time occupation, in disability concerns, and we want to continue to draw positive attention to them all. Thank you all for coming down this morning. One last round of appreciation for all of you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Each month, the Oklahoma City Public School System and the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City allow us to honor one teacher in the metro area with our Teacher of the Month award, and this month's winner is Shannon Larson of Wilson Elementary School. Let's show our appreciation. Congratulations. We have a resolution. I'll ask the clerk to read it.
Whereas Shannon Larson has been named Teacher of the Month for September 2017 by the Oklahoma City Public Schools and the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City. Whereas Shannon is a proud graduate of the University of Central Oklahoma, where she received her Bachelor of Science in Special Education in May 2012, and her Master's of Education degree in Reading in May 2017. Whereas Shannon is beginning her sixth year of teaching, her third year at Wilson Arts Integration Elementary. Teaching second grade this year, from 2012 to 2015, she worked at Eugene Field Elementary, teaching Special Education for K through 5 with mild, moderate disabilities. Whereas Shannon previously participated in the Urban Teacher Preparation Academy at the University of Central Oklahoma, and credits a program for assisting her during the critical period of student teaching and during her first few years as a new teacher. She fully attributes the program and its mentorship opportunities as critical to her success in the classroom. Whereas Shannon credits her teaching career to a challenging student and a summer camp for kids who had eventually begun to make better and stronger choices by summer's end. The positive relationship she developed with this child was a catalyst, starting Shannon on the path to becoming a teacher, changing her college major from pre-law to education. Whereas Shannon's heartfelt desire is to be that one that made a difference for the really challenging kids. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby recognize and commend Shannon Larson on her selection as the September 2017 Teacher of the Month by the Oklahoma City Public Schools and the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City.
That is quite a story, and a very inspiring one, too. Can we show our appreciation to Shannon? And I'm having all this applause in hopes of passing this resolution, so can we have a motion there in a second? All right, cast your votes. Well, there's a shock. It passed unanimously. And you were telling me before we got out here, teaching second grade, and I asked about when your students get to the second grade, is there a fairly consistent level of reading? Is there, or are you having to teach one level to some students and some others? And you said that is one of the challenges of the job. You want to expound on that, and maybe it's a reminder just how important literacy is to our pre-k.
Sure. Thank you. Well, thank you so much, and thank you for the kind words and the warm welcome, and thank you for supporting public education. But yes, I work at a school in Oklahoma City that has a diverse population, and a lot of our students come in and they're prepared and they're ready to learn to read, and a lot of the students don't. So we use arts integration at Wilson Elementary, where we have training to integrate dance or fine arts into reading or math, and then students are able to learn and progress at their own rate because of the opportunities that we have at Wilson for arts and dance at our school. So I just wanted to say thank you again to everyone for supporting public education. I know that education has been an empowering and liberating force in my life and for so many of our students. That's what they need to overcome the challenges that they're facing, and just supporting all of our students and making sure that they have what they need. So thank you so much.
Please pass along our best wishes back to the faculty at Wilson. All right, one more round of applause for Shannon. All right, we're on item four of the council agenda. It's the Journal of Council Proceedings. I'll look for a motion on 4A to recede the journal for September 12th, and 4B to approve the journal for August 29th. All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously, and then item five is request for uncontested continuance.
Mayor, this morning, we've got a few starting on page 11 on the consent docket. Page 11. Item AF1 has the wrong attachment, so we ask that that be stricken. That's AF1. And AF2 has the wrong ward number, so we just want to highlight that that says Ward 5, it should be Ward 1. So that's AF2. And then moving to page 25. Item 9K1. Item C1544 Johnson Drive, we ask that that be stricken. The owner secured. Item F1144 Northwest 95th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner secured. And then there are items 9L1, the same two items, item C1544 Johnson Drive, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. And item E1144 Northwest 95th Street, we ask that that be stricken. Again, the owner has secured.
Item 6 begins a series of revocable permits. We'll take these individually. The first is with Capitol Hill Main Street to hold the Fiesta de las Americas, September 30th. That would be on Southwest 25th Street between Robinson and Hudson, and it's in Ward 4. Is Donna Cervantes here? Donna, come on up and tell us about the Fiesta de las Americas.
Thank you. Good morning. Thanks for having me. We are happy to be before you to announce our 12th Annual Fiesta de las Americas. This is hosted every year in historic Capitol Hill. It is a celebration of Hispanic culture during Hispanic Heritage Month. It begins with a parade at 10:00 a.m., which comes north on Walker from Capitol Hill High School to Southwest 25th. This features our local marching vans. It features many cultural groups, student groups. It's really a sign of our community pride, and we welcome everyone from the community to enjoy that. This year, we're proud that Dr. Jerry Stewart from OCCC is our grand marshal. There's much going on in Capitol Hill that we're proud of. The opening of the OCCC Capitol Hill Center is just a key to all the revitalization efforts, and we thank you for your support. We look forward to having you there. I hope you receive my invitation. We'd love to welcome the council onstage. Enjoy the parade and come onstage for recognition, please. That's at Southwest 25th and Harvey.
All right, thank you. It's in Ward 4, Todd.
It is, and I will be there, of course, and I'm really looking forward to the event. I haven't seen the parade yet, but I've heard it is a great parade. And the new OCCC building down there is, if any of you all haven't seen it yet, it's just, it's phenomenal. It really is great. So with that, I'd just like to make the motion for approval.
Okay. All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Thanks, Donna.
Thank you.
All right, item 6B is a permit request to hold the Brick or Treat, which would take place in Bricktown between Flaming Lips Alley and Wanda Jackson Way. Is there anyone here representing this event? Good morning. We'll need your name and address for the record.
Good morning. I'm Riley Cole with Downtown Oklahoma City. So the 4th Annual Brick or Treat is happening on Tuesday, October 24th, from 4:00 to 7:00, and this is where Bricktown businesses open their doors and hand out candy to the children in costume. And so this event has grown over the years. We're expecting 5,000-plus people to be in Bricktown and roaming through the businesses. So the majority of the programming will take place on the Third Base Plaza at the ballpark. And so we're requesting to close down Mickey Mantle from Flaming Lips to Wanda Jackson.
Sounds like a lot of fun. And basically, it's dark until they, until the restaurants close or until the other parts.
The event's from 4:00 to 7:00, so we'll probably stop around then.
4:00 to 7:00, okay, so at the end of the day, but not after dark.
Right.
All right. How about a motion then? John, it's in Ward 7. All right, and we have a motion in a second. We're voting on 6B, and it passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 6C is a request of the Oklahoma Fallen Heroes Foundation to hold the 45 IBCT Fallen Heroes Half Marathon. This would be September 30th, and it would take place in Ward 7, starting at Joe Carter Avenue between 4th and East Reno. Is anyone here representing this event? Yes, sir. Can we have your name and address, please?
Yes, sir. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Mayor. First name Steve, last name Josie. I'm the, I'm the acting, let me start over. I'm the acting member of the Oklahoma Fallen Heroes Foundation, and this year, I'm actually the director of race operations for the 7th Annual 45th IBCT Fallen Heroes Half Marathon.
All right.
And a 5K. To give you a little history real quick, this is our 7th annual event. It started in 2011 when the 45th IBCT was deployed in Afghanistan. We sustained 14 KIA's, and our soldiers that were at the home station decided to do something to show some sacrifice, and they did a half marathon. And so when we got back from our deployment, I was really good friends with the soldier that illustrated that, and so we decided to make an annual event. And we've raised thousands of dollars from sponsors and selling race T-shirts, and this year, we moved it from Norman to Oklahoma City because we wanted to grow it and wanted to do it in the Bricktown area.
Well, we're glad that you chose Bricktown as your site. How can people sign up for this event?
They can go to www.45ibctfallenheroes.org, and there's a link there with registration. It'll take you to the "Sign Me Up" page, and you'll register there.
Okay, 45ibct.com?
Fallenheroes.org. 45ibctfallenheroes.org. You can Google that, and it'll take you right to our page.
All right, it's in Ward 7, John.
All right, thank you. Move to item 2.
All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Item D is a request with St. Francis of Assisi Church and Rosary School to hold the Rosary and St. Francis Oktoberfest, October 1st, between 18th Street and 19th Street. Is anyone here representing this event? Come on forward, and we'll need your name and address, please.
Good morning. My name is Annie Maynard, and I'm a parent volunteer with Rosary School in St. Francis. This is for our 29th annual event. We have a fun run in Gatewood. We have the neighborhood support. It allows physical fitness for our children and everyone in our community to get together and run.
What are the times of the event?
The race kicks off after 11 o'clock mass, so it starts around 12 o'clock.
Okay. And this is in Ward 6. Meg's not here, so would someone make a motion in her absence? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck. And lastly, item 6E is a request with the Toby Keith Foundation OK Kids Corral to hold a Walk a Mile in Their Boots. It'll be September 30th, and it's in far south Oklahoma City at 104th Street between Penn and Kingsgate Drive. Lauren, come on up, and we will need your name and address for the record.
Yes, good morning, everyone. I'm Lauren Polczynski with the Toby Keith Foundation, and we are hosting our first OK Kids Corral 5K and a Mile in Their Boots Walk on Saturday, September 30th. It will start in the Chatney Square Shopping Center at 9:00 a.m. The course is an out-and-back. It will just be one lane on Southwest 104th into the Kingsgate neighborhood and back out. And after that, from 10:00 to 2:00, we have a children's fest with lots of free and fun activities for kids and families in the shopping center.
All right, and how can people be a part of this?
They can sign up. We're on "Sign Me Up." They can search OK Kids Corral, or they can go to the Toby Keith Foundation website and look under News and Events, and a direct link will take you there.
All right, and David, it's in Ward 5.
Yes, Your Honor, and we only have one or two events in Ward 5 unlike the other wards, so this is a special, special time for us, so I recommend approval.
All right, Sarah, so cast your votes. It passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks. Good luck. All right, we'll reset the council meeting convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. Looks like there are 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 items today on the MFA.
Move to item 7.
All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC MFA convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. Four items.
Move to item 7.
Comments or questions on the PPA? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC PPA convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. There are two items.
Move to item 2.
All right, comments on the EAT? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC EAT and reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket.
Move to item 7. Is there any individual considerations?
All right, are there any individual considerations? All right, then, we were ready to vote. Cast your votes, and the consent docket passes unanimously. Move on to the concurrence docket.
Move to item 7. Is there any individual considerations?
All right, are there any individual considerations on the concurrence docket? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. And that moves us to item 9. These are items that require a separate vote. We're going to start with an amendment to a master design statement. This has to do with a property that is on 59th Street, Southeast 59th Street. It was all one single-family residential, and it would be moving into a new spud if approved. Todd, this is in Ward 4.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would go ahead and ask that we move item 1 for approval.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any comments or questions from anyone? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item, yeah.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Do we need to vote on 2 also, or is that just?
Yes.
That was the amendment, so now we need to vote on the ordinance.
And on the ordinance on item 2, Your Honor, I would like to make a motion that we strike item 3 on the requirements.
All right, what's item 3?
Item 3 is a sidewalk. And just to give you a little background on this, I'm a pro sidewalk guy. I love sidewalks. But this is going to be about 80 feet of sidewalk. It'll be the only 80 feet of sidewalk within this mile stretch of road on Southwest 59th. With this change that we're doing, there really isn't going to be any new development on this property, any construction of any sort. So I feel like we're placing a burden on a small, family-run business to build 80 feet of sidewalk that has no connectivity to anything and no planned connectivity along this mile stretch of road.
This is on, then, the south side of the...
It's on the north side of Southwest 59th, and there are no sidewalks there.
And there's no sidewalks on that whole side. We do have a program where we have in the past required businesses to put it into escrow, and then if it was ever necessary in the future, the sidewalk would be built in, with the idea that you don't want a sidewalk to nowhere. So it doesn't make any sense to have a sidewalk that starts here and here but doesn't lead anywhere on any of the direction. But if we're fairly confident there's not ever going to be, you know, sidewalks constructed, that would be a burden on a business owner to have to build a sidewalk. So if you feel comfortable with that, I'm comfortable with voting on it, but this is a, you know, highly extraordinary because we're so committed to sidewalks.
Correct. And if there was going to be any type of development here with this change or something like that, I would be all for it, but there are no planned developmental changes on it.
Okay. Yes, David?
Is it okay to comment?
Absolutely.
Todd, I understand what you're saying. I just have seen what can happen with that type of decision, especially out in Ward 5. There's quite a few areas that were developed prior to the requirements of sidewalks, and they just look so strange now. We don't have any way of coming back in there and requiring them to put a sidewalk in at this point in time. And I was just telling City Manager Couch this morning that we are now seeing sidewalks being added along South May Avenue between 104th and 89th Street, and they're only halfway completed, but already a portion that has been completed are being utilized. We're seeing people walk to the nearby grocery store and to other activities. So I'm going to respectfully vote against the decision to exclude that. I would be willing to accept an escrow placing money... I would be willing to accept an escrow, uh, placing monies in an escrow, assuming we are confident that that would cover the cost of completing sidewalks at a later date. Uh, thank you.
All right.
I, I mean, just, just to add another comment to it, I've been out at this location many times. I've looked for goat trails. I've looked for potential walking places. There are none. Um, again, if they were doing any type of development there, um, land improvement, anything like that, I would say, yeah, let's go ahead and do it, but they're not. So I don't know why we would burden a small family business to put in eighty feet of sidewalk in the middle of a mile stretch of road that has no sidewalk and no plans for any sidewalk. Just, just my thought. But thank you for your comments.
All right. Any other comments before we vote?
So is this voting on just that particular item? Um, the amendment to the, uh, design statement to delete number three requirement for some of the things?
Yeah, I mean, it, it looks like there, I mean, there's a church there to the east of it, right? And a big, big open area where there's a baseball field. I mean, if they, if there was a sidewalk there, it would make sense to continue it, but, yeah. I mean, I, I think I agree with Todd. It didn't seem to be a place that really makes much sense.
Okay.
Before we vote on this, though, I need five votes or three of the five?
Five.
Five.
Out of the six.
All right. Did you want to say something? I saw you stand up.
Call the line.
What's that?
Would you use that call the line?
Yeah, sure. Come on up. Sure. Wait, wait till you get up here and then we'll need your name and address for the record.
Sure. My name is Nick Brook. I'm two-two-five-seven Northwest Thirty-Sixth Street. We just read a proclamation for Disability Awareness Month. My girlfriend has rheumatoid arthritis. She can't walk on the street and sidewalks don't get built unless they get built. So, you know, I know it's silly to build a little sidewalk from one end to the other, but, I mean, that's how it works. This is the only time the city has an opportunity to force someone to build a sidewalk. They're not going to do it on their own. Thank you. That's all.
Thanks. All right. We have a motion by Todd. Is there a second?
Yes.
Okay. John made a second. All right. Cast your votes. Wait, Larry, do you want to talk?
What are we voting on?
We're, we're voting on whether or not to require the, the motion is to not require the sidewalk to be constructed.
And so if you vote yes, you're not requiring a sidewalk.
That's correct.
Thank you, sir.
Uh-huh. All right. Cast your votes and it passes five to one. All right. Item nine B comes to us from the Traffic Commission.
Now we need a motion on the ordinance.
Move the item to the second.
On the amendment.
On two.
Okay. I thought we voted twice.
We will, we amended two. We voted on one.
Uh-huh.
We amended on two and now we need to vote on two.
So we have three votes on the two items.
That's correct.
Okay. I guess that makes sense to somebody. All right.
And, Your Honor, I would like to-
We amended the second item, so this is the second vote on number two.
I'd like to make the motion that we go ahead and move item number two for approval.
All right. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. All right. Now we're moving on to nine B. These are items that came to us from the Traffic Commission. The first is from Ward seven. John, you okay with this, removing a parking spot?
Yes.
All right. We have a motion in a second. We're voting on nine B one. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item nine B two would establish a ninety-degree angle parking on the south side of Twenty-Seven Street. It's in Ward two. Would somebody make a motion?
Move the items to the second.
All right. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item nine B three, uh, is a Ward two parking issue and this is, uh, to establish a reserved parking space for the physically disabled on Twenty-Seven Street. Is there a motion?
Move the items to the second.
All right. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item nine B four is to establish a ninety-degree angle parking on the north side of Northwest First Terrace. This is in Ward six. Would somebody make a motion?
Move the items to the second.
On nine B four. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. And on nine B five, this is to establish a reserved parking space for the physically disabled on Northwest Terrace. Again, it's in Ward six. Is there a motion?
Move the items to the second.
Is there a second? All right. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. And item nine C has to do with the, the downtown bid. And today we're going to be adopting and ratifying the assessment role. Is there anyone here that hopes to speak on this item today? We're going to be looking at item nine C and nine D and how it applies to the downtown bid. All right. Is there a motion then on nine C?
Move the items to the second.
All right. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. That ratifies the assessment role. And then nine D includes a public hearing, again, to adopt and confirm the assessment role for the Downtown Improvement District. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on this item?
No.
All right. We have a motion and a second on nine D. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. All right. Item nine E is an item to be introduced today and this has to do with the use tax that would accompany the sales taxes that were passed on the twelfth.
Mayor, E, F, and G all are related to the election. E is the use tax that goes along with the quarter cent sales tax. And so the use tax is for things that aren't, it's a companion item to the sales tax and it would be for things that were purchased outside the state and used in the state. And if you all, if you remember, recently Amazon started paying on a portion of their collections and that goes into use tax. That's not a, not a sales tax. So that's just an example. So this item E is a use tax for the quarter cent sales tax and the general fund and that use tax would go into the general fund. Item F is a use tax on the one percent, uh, sales tax, a temporary one percent sales tax for twenty-seven months. And item G is a resolution directing where that use tax would go. And the resolution in item G is identical to the resolution that we did for MAPS for three. And that sets aside the money to be used primarily for public safety capital, but also allows the funds to be used for the running of the office for the administration of that tax. Oh, oh, oh. These were set up to be, uh, introduced and adopted today with emergency, but it takes seven votes for that to happen. There's only six of us here today, so what we'd like to do is introduce them and then we'll bring them back next time in two weeks for, for final adoption.
All right. So we're voting on first item nine E.
Just to be introduced.
Right.
Move the items to the second.
Okay. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item F introduces the other issue. Is there a motion?
Move the items to the second.
Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. And then item nine G has to do with the adminis, the administration of the, of the tax.
And designating it for public safety.
We want to defer it.
They don't have to.
No.
Yeah.
Move the items to the second.
Is there a second? Cast your votes on nine G and it passes unanimously. All right. Item nine H is a public hearing about an item that was introduced to us two weeks ago and this records some changes made to the building code.
Has to do, there was a presentation, uh, two weeks ago. It has to do with insulation, uh, insulation installation and, uh, licensing thereof.
All right. Is anyone here hoping to speak on item nine H?
Move the items to the second.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item nine I is a public hearing regarding the franchise agreement with Cox Cable. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under nine I? All right. How about a motion?
Move the items to the second.
Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item nine J is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under nine J?
No.
All right. How about a motion?
Move the items to the second.
Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item nine K is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under nine K?
Move the items to the second.
All right. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item nine L is a public hearing regarding abandoned buildings. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any of those items?
Move the items to the second.
Is there a second?
No.
All right. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item nine M is a public hearing regarding an amendment to the twenty-eighteen fiscal budget.
Right. This budget amendment contains two items. One is what we call a, a purchase order rollover. We buy things that were, uh, purchased in last fiscal year, but the invoices don't come over, come into the new budget year and so we handle, uh, handle that through this budget amendment. And then the second is for furniture for the, for the new courts building. So those are the two items.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on item nine M? All right. Do we have a motion?
Move the items to the second.
And a second. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item nine N, I understand we do not need executive session, so a motion to approve the resolution would be in order?
Move the items to the second.
Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item nine O, I understand we do not need executive session, so is there a motion to approve?
Move the items to the second.
Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item nine P, I understand we do need executive session, so is there a motion to move item nine P to executive session?
Move the items to the second.
Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item nine Q, I understand we do need executive session. Is there a motion to move nine Q into executive session?
Move the items to the second.
Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item nine R is claims recommended for denial. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under nine R? All right. How about a motion?
Move the items to the second.
Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item ten A is claims recommended for approval. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under item ten? All right. How about a motion?
Move the items to the second.
Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item eleven is items from council. James, do you have anything for us today? Larry? All right. Todd? David?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. Forty-five years ago yesterday, I started attending college and I, I know that because Councilman, uh, Todd and I got to attend a, a celebration yesterday at Oklahoma City Community College, celebrating its forty-fifth year. So I had graduated from high school that May and, uh, decided to go to college at Oklahoma City Community College that fall. And what was said last night was there had been hundreds of thousands of individuals who began their, uh, uh, college education through Oklahoma City Community College as a result of that institution being built forty-five years ago. And I agree with that. Uh, many of the people I grew up with and attended school with probably would not have gone on to a traditional college, uh, had it not been for the community college that was built in South Oklahoma City. And the point I'd like to make about that is, uh, several years ago through the downtown TIF, we were able to assist with the, uh, development of Oklahoma City Community College's Capitol Hill facility. And I think it's going to have the same impact on a separate segment of the city's population. People closer to the old Capitol Hill area will now have the ability to enter a college setting and hopefully will continue their, uh, college education as a result of that. So I just feel very, uh, good about our ability to assist with that and, uh, personal belief that, uh, those types of events really do, uh, have impact on individual lives and they can be transformational to many people. So just wanted to share that. Thank you.
John? All right. City Manager reports.
This morning, we'll start with a presentation on, on CVB with Mike Carrier.
Mr. Mayor, good morning.
Good morning.
Pleasure to be here to see you again today and, uh, talk to you for a few minutes about the results of last year's efforts, last fiscal year. Uh, Jane, you ready? Instead of listening to me, we decided to do something a little different this year, so watch your screens.
We wanted to present to you that in this fashion today because that was entirely produced inside our shop. Uh, as I had told you last year, we have a, a videographer, content manager on our team. That's the kind of thing he does each and every day of producing all the videos that you saw in the background, putting it together, editing, doing the, the presentation. And we use this type of tool now to be able to attract conventions and meetings, to be able to send, uh, proposals to them in a video fashion instead of, again, getting up and speaking to them. Uh, obviously, we do that also, but, uh, you know, it, these are the kinds of things we're doing now and this is all over social media, uh, this type of work so that, uh, people are now getting a live view of what goes on in and around Oklahoma City. Uh, you saw some results there, the significant increase in social media likes and followers, the, uh, the, the stories that have been pitched this year to, uh, national publications, national media about Oklahoma City and the tourism industry and all the things going on. So we continue to, to see progress in those fashions. Um, it has been a successful year. Uh, we booked more rooms this past fiscal year than have ever been booked in the history of, of Oklahoma City through the Convention and Visitors Bureau. of Oklahoma City through the Convention and Visitors Bureau. So we continue to grow and to see positive change. I can tell you, there's excitement out there in the meetings community about what we're doing with the new convention center and the Omni Hotel. People are anxious to see us get started on that. One of the things I've learned over my 35-plus years in this industry, you can tell them all about it, but until the shuttle hits the ground, they still don't believe you. They've seen too many fall apart before. One of the things we get to brag about is Oklahoma City's history with the MAPS program and our track record there. So we're looking forward to that coming up this year and being able to do considerably more as we move forward. I want to make a couple of quick comments about a couple of things that have happened after the end of the fiscal year that have gotten a lot of publicity. First of all, the National Baptist Convention's 2018 Education Conference that Councilman Pettis has been involved in, but certainly Reverend Reed from Fairview Missionary Baptist Church. And I called him out because he is a prime example of citizens of Oklahoma City standing up and saying, "I'd like to host a meeting in my city." And we need every citizen in Oklahoma City to do those kinds of things. The mayor did it years ago with the mayor's conference, and some of you folks have done that also, but that's a great example. And, you know, we're literally going to fill the city next June, a group that we should have had four or five years to plan for them to show up on our doorsteps. We're literally going to get here in less than a year. And there are a lot of people in Oklahoma City pulling together to make this thing work. And so we're excited about that and appreciate Councilman Pettis and also Reverend Reed for their great work on this. The second one, and to me, this is a great example of how the work that's gone on here for 20 years plus comes together to produce a great opportunity, and that's the Paddlesports Retailers Association. The state of Utah made a huge blunder in taking a political position that upset the outdoor sports industry, hikers and bikers and rock climbers. And why they did that, I have no idea, but they did it and it upset the people there. So the largest trade show in the state of Utah, the Outdoor Retailers Show, which started in Salt Lake City and had been successfully going on there for years, is moving to Denver. But the paddlesports element of that split off because of some other situations, timing issues with the meeting. Well, they started looking around at where would be a good place to do anything associated with paddlesports, canoeing, kayaking, rafting, standing paddleboard, you name it, that's involved, plus all the accoutrements that go with it. So you've got camping, you've got hiking, you've got all kinds of other outdoor activity that go with that. They wanted to come here this coming year, or this past August, rather, and we couldn't accommodate them. But they said, "Okay, we'll come next year." And then they came down and looked. Because of what previous city council and leadership such as you folks have done, the Boathouse District showed itself not just really well, showed itself to be outstanding. And when you combine that with the new convention center just down the boulevard from it, the existence of hotels and our existing convention center close by that they could get into, they've made a commitment to be here for the next five years. This is a huge convention and a huge opportunity, and the river is important because they do on-water demonstrations. And in Salt Lake City, they had to drive for 45 minutes to get to water. And last year, this year, in Madison, Wisconsin, it was at their doorstep, but they didn't have any whitewater. So what you folks have done, what our citizens have done, this is a prime example of how these things connect to each other and provide opportunities, not just for our citizens, although that's a great thing that we've done for them, but also brings people from literally around the nation and around the world. And so we're extremely pleased with what's happened there and people standing up to invite guests to come to Oklahoma City to spend their money, to have a good time, to go home with great stories and tell other people that they should come see us. So good things happening. We continue to appreciate your all's support. It's a great place to sell. We're looking forward to more and more opportunities and continuing better days ahead of us. So I'll be happy to answer any questions, but thank you all for what you do to support us.
Well, thank you, Mike. Another MAPS III success story, so thanks. And MAPS, the original MAPS and MAPS III. Any comments or questions for Mike? Mike, sometimes I get asked, "How many people go to Bricktown in a year?" Well, how do you measure that? And do you give it per month or per year? What's the best way to explain that?
The best guestimate, and that's purely what it is because there's no, obviously, there's no ticket counters or entryways. So the best guestimate, based on police estimates, based on estimates from the Bricktown Association, from merchants, all in, it's probably somewhere in the 5.5 to 6 million people a year. I think you all passed a couple of approvals this morning for walks or runs starting in Bricktown. Baseball, pre and post-Thunder games, concerts, you know, you look at all of the different things that happen down there. And frankly, one of the things that I was amazed when I first came here 10 years ago was that you could come downtown and Bricktown would be full when there wasn't anything going on in other places. But on nights when Civic Center has a production and it's full, there's a concert at the peak, and Bricktown is still full. And of course, now with the other districts that we have in the downtown area, we just see that many more people in the downtown area enjoying themselves, spending money, showing off Oklahoma City. So it's a significant number.
Any other comments or questions for Mike? All right, Mike, congratulations. Appreciate the good work.
Thanks. Appreciate you all.
All right.
Next up, we're going to do a presentation on a council priority, developing a transportation system that works for all of us. And it's going to be Eric Winger and Aubrey McDermott and Jason Fairbrush. Maybe not that order.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Appreciation also goes to Joanna Ferguson. So Joanna helps coordinate the presentation that she sees this morning between the different directors, and so our appreciation goes to her and also a lot of the city staff for a lot of the data that you're going to see as a part of the presentation. So as we begin this morning, and we talk about city council priorities and leading for results in specific to the transportation system, I'm going to update on three specific measures that include the percent of citizens satisfied with the condition of city streets, number of miles of trails and sidewalks constructed, and then also an update on our average commute time. So we've talked for months and probably for the last year, either through the bond issue or through citizen surveys, about city streets being the citizens' number-one priority. And we've been tracking their opinion at this point, or the surveys that have come back for the past several years, and you'll see the results here. And we're still seeing a continued decline in the percent of citizens that are satisfied with our streets. And so what we've done this year is a little bit different in the measure. We used to average together the residential and the arterial, but we've now separated those. So the major streets, the arterials, and the percent satisfaction is in the green. The blue are the residentials. But both are trending downward, and it's something that we're monitoring really closely. Now, I'm going to show you a few slides in just a moment where we are continuing to invest in our city streets, and so financially, the number of lane miles and a lot of the construction that we're doing. So as we look at these measures, and we try to figure out if we're doing this much work, why do we continue to see this decline? And we think that some of it continues to be some of the delays and some of the inconveniences just due to the fact of construction. That with a lot of the orange that's on our city streets, that there's just a dissatisfaction with that work, obviously, once the work's complete and we open up that new road, we have a dramatic improvement. But there's still a lot of work to do in Oklahoma City. As we look at our PCI ratings, pavement condition indexes, we have improved our pavement condition index generally at least a point every year for the past several years. We currently average citywide a 66, and so this is up from a 61 back in fiscal year 12. Now, this is a direct result of our bond initiatives. This is also a direct result of a lot of the general fund resurfacing that the councils appropriated additional dollars towards, but we are actually improving streets as a whole.
The mayor's made it clear to me that he expects that to go up higher now with the resources that you have. I'm not unclear about that.
We would believe the same, and I can update further on that as we go into the presentation. So when we look at the PCI map, this is the map of Oklahoma City, and there's a lot of red that is on this map. I know the legend is very small, but the streets that are in red are those streets with the lowest PCIs and are in need of complete reconstruction. Those that are in green are in very good condition. We do have shades of color in the blue and the purple range that are generally those resurfaced streets. But as we look at the upcoming bond issue and the passage on September 12 of both the 2017 bond and the 2017 temporary sales tax, we are anticipating a lot more green and blue on this map than a lot of the red. We're looking to address a lot of the major streets in need in Oklahoma City. When we look at the number of miles of improvement, you'll see that this has also been increasing steadily over the past several years. What is happening is even when we talk about bond issues, and we talk about that being one of our major funding sources, the fact has been that a lot of the bond issue had been focused on the widening of city streets. In recent years, we've been converting to the resurfacing projects, and so the number of miles has dramatically increased. We've also added to that the general fund resurfacing that were priority projects of the council, which has gotten our number up this past fiscal year to 57 completed miles of street improvement. Now, as we look forward then again, and we talk more about the recently approved bond issue and sales tax, this number could potentially almost double, at least for the short term. Now, the tax is a 27-month tax, but it is 70% street resurfacing-type projects. And so as we report on this next and future years, you could expect this number to go up, and again, improvement of streets citywide. These are the dollar allocations that you'll find that are related to those street improvements, and this is geo-bond expenditures, just specific to streets. We have averaged around $50 million a year, but what you're starting to see is that we've kind of leveled out and are on the slight decline. That's simply just because the 2007 bond issue is wrapping up. But again, as we reiterate with the passage of the new bond issue and sales tax, these dollar amounts will increase now that we have new funding available. The second measure that I'm going to speak on this morning, streets obviously being very important, but it's another initiative that is strong in Oklahoma City, is the number of trails and sidewalks constructed. You can see that we have a five-year history here, about 19 miles in fiscal year 13, but sidewalks alone now, 77 miles this past year. And that's really as a result not just of the bond issue, but also the MAPS III initiatives that are putting sidewalks across many parts of Oklahoma City. We're also starting to track those trails projects. And again, these are trails projects as initiatives of MAPS III. But as we start talking about not just motoring traffic, but walkability in Oklahoma City, you can see this is also increasing. This is a map of those sidewalk locations that are citywide, and you'll see that it's very diverse. It's across all of Oklahoma City. And we've really talked a little bit about the bond issue. The one that are the MAPS III sidewalks are the ones that are identified in blue. The bond issue projects are identified in orange. But then we've also had some general fund sidewalks, and this is some projects that the council may recall, those are the ones that are identified in red. And again, those were ward-specific and distributed throughout the city. The last item that I'll update on this morning is our average commute time. This data is external to the city, but we continue to monitor this. But what we'll find is that over the past six years, our commute time has relatively remained the same. Probably the biggest thing that we could note on this is that with the implementation of the new traffic control system, we're able to change timings on streets, we're able to improve commuting corridors, and the time hasn't increased, although we've increased a lot of traffic, population, and other things across the city. So we're actually able to maintain those very good commute times for Oklahoma City at an average of about 20 minutes. So with that, we've updated really on three key measures for transportation systems, at least from a public works perspective, quality of city streets, trails and sidewalks, and our commute time. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Eric? Yeah, David?
Your Honor, just a couple of comments. Eric, thanks for all the work your department has done. Just wanted to point out, we've recently resurfaced the service roads on I-240, and not only did it improve the ability to travel along those service roads, but those north-south streets, if you cross those service roads, has dramatically improved as far as the smoothness. So I know a lot of people out in Ward 5 have been talking about the need to improve the resurfacing of those service roads. So it, again, not only helped tremendously accessing the service roads, but going across them as well. Second point, as I mentioned earlier this morning, there's been some new sidewalks going along South May Avenue, and I've noticed even though one project is only halfway completed, they are already being put into use. And it just shows, I think, the built-up demand for sidewalks, how people really want to see those. And I suspect, because a lot of people now are walking towards a large grocery store there at 104th and May, if 104th Street itself, if we could go, say, from Pennsylvania all the way to I-44, because there's development occurring along I-44 now, you'd see a lot of foot traffic increasing along 104th Street. So I am a firm believer of the importance of sidewalks, and I know the citizens of Oklahoma City will utilize them when they have the ability to. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions for Eric? All right. Thank you. All right, citizens to be heard.
We've got a couple more.
Oh, we're still on the transportation system?
So good morning, Mayor and Council. The Public Transportation and Parking Department looks forward to this opportunity each year to come, talk a little bit and report out to council and the residents of Oklahoma City about the services that our department provides on a daily basis and how they influence and align to city council's priority to develop a public transportation system that works for all citizens. If you look at the priority itself, you'll notice that it's really all about connectivity. It's getting people where they need to go in a timely manner, accommodating multiple modes of transportation, and of course, public transportation is one of those critical modes of developing a robust transportation system. We also know from work that's being done in the region, as well as results from citizen surveys, that there is a growing interest in improving public transportation in Oklahoma City. So hopefully, with the information I'll provide today through our progress indicators, you'll have an idea of some of the accomplishments we're able to make at that level. So as far as the priority indicators go, we'll look at public transit ridership. We'll look at number of bus service hours. We'll focus a little bit on our weeknight ridership, because that is our newest service offering. And then we'll look at our average frequency during peak hours. And again, these are the priority indicators aligned to the council priority. So taking a look at the very first priority indicator, this is public transportation ridership, measured in riders per service hour. And we measure riders per service hour because it's really the most effective way to gauge changes in ridership. It helps us kind of determine the efficiency of our system, and it also is really helpful when we compare ridership year over year when we have changes in the total number of revenue hours or service hours available. The other thing I wanted to point out is that this graph also looks at our Monday through Friday service span. As a reminder, this is where the additional investment that has been afforded by council in public transportation has been allocated, our Monday through Friday service, daytime, and our new night service. So with that, and we'll take a look at the slide here, and it's kind of busy, but we've shared it with council before. I'll point out that the red horizontal line represents our riders per service hour goal, which is 18.5. The light blue line is an indicator of our actual performance in terms of riders per service hour. And then if you look at the bar charts, that is what that riders per service hour equates to in terms of average passenger trips per day. So for example, in FY '17, you can see we finished the fiscal year at 16.77 riders per service hour, under our goal of 18.5, but we averaged 11,245 trips per day on our Monday through Friday service with the Embark Bus System. Also, if you looked at that number and annualized it, it'd be over 3.1 million passenger trips, and this is the third consecutive year that we've provided over 3 million total passenger trips just on our fixed route bus service. So we're certainly pleased with how we've been able to maintain some of that ridership growth. And the last thing I'll mention on this slide is the ridership growth. Just to give you a sense, if you look at that 11,245 passenger trips per day in FY ' '17, and you compare that back to FY '14, prior to our service enhancements and the relaunch of our bus service, that's about a 10.8% growth in passenger trips. So again, very pleased with the ability to implement some changes and the additional resources provided by council to enhance our bus system. So on the next slide, we're going to look at service hours and ridership. Again, a very similar chart to what you were just looking at. We have the target and the actual performance of our riders per service hour. But instead, what you'll see is, on the bar graph, you'll see the changes in our total service hours on Monday through Friday. So in FY '17, we actually provided 172,523 hours of bus service. And again, if you compare that back to FY '14, prior to our system enhancements, you'll see that's just under 29,000 additional hours, or about a 20% increase in total revenue hours. So what that means, of course, for our residents, is that in FY '17 currently, there's 20% more bus service within the same area versus what there was back in FY '14. So again, I think just a very tangible example of council's commitment to improving or influencing this priority. Looking at the next slide, we'll talk a little bit about our night service. This is the newest addition, I guess, to our family of services. And as you'll recall, back in January of '16, we were able to implement two additional night routes. Just to give you a refresher on our night routes, we currently have four routes that provide service until midnight. One is a Northside Crosstown, Route 20- And then we have Route Five, which runs north along Classen, western, up to Memorial. And then we have Route Thirteen, which runs south down western, provides some service along I-240, and the Oklahoma City Community College. So that's our lineup for our night service. And what I wanted to share with you this morning was really a comparison of the first six months of all four night routes being in service. That's the red line on your graph, which represents January of sixteen through June of sixteen. Compared to this fiscal year, FY seventeen, the blue line is January seventeen through June of seventeen. And obviously, what you can tell there from the chart is that each one of those months, year over year, we've had growth in ridership. And if you were to sum, for example, the cumulative ridership there that you see for that six-month period in FY seventeen, you'd come up with about forty-eight thousand, or a little over forty-eight thousand passenger trips provided during that time period on those four routes. If you compare that back to the first six months we launched the service, which is what the red line represents, you'd see about nine thousand additional trips, or about a twenty-three percent growth in, again, in total cumulative passenger trips year over year. So suffice it to say, that's certainly our fastest-growing segment of ridership, and that is our night service. And then finishing up with our average daytime frequency, we all know, and we've talked about how important frequency is for a robust public transit system. And so this is kind of a history of changes in our system frequency. Again, looking at FY thirteen, this was before any service changes. We had various frequencies, some ranging even between seventy-five and ninety minutes. We had some peak and some off-peak. And so our off-peak frequency back in FY thirteen was about fifty-three minutes. During peak hours, we were closer to forty-three minutes. And then at the very end of FY fourteen, we implemented our service enhancements, and we got that average frequency down to just over thirty-five minutes. In FY fifteen, we were able to make additional enhancements by adding frequency on Routes eleven and eight, and we were able to get the average frequency for our daytime buses under thirty-five minutes. And so you can see through FY sixteen and seventeen, we've been able to hold steady on those frequency improvements. And, you know, that's a, that's a commitment that staff has, even despite the fact that we've seen a couple of years where we've, we've took budget reductions. One of the things we've tried very hard to do is maintain the level of improvements that we've been able to make, and I think the, the frequency here shows that. So with that, that will conclude my overview of the council priority indicator, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
All right, any comments or questions for Jason?
I have one, Mayor.
Yeah, sure. Go ahead.
Showing the nighttime ridership numbers and the year-over-year growth, which looks awesome. There was a big spike in March. I was just curious if you guys knew, knew what caused that?
Well, you know, generally what you'll, generally what you'll see is better ridership with better weather. And so looking at March there, actually, for, you know, both year-over, you know, both years of comparisons, you'll see it, you know, increases. There's definitely an increase. But for FY seventeen, yeah, a little bit more of a spike than what we would normally see. We can look into it, but my, my guess is, is probably we had some, some nice weather days, you know, coming out of the kind of winter months, a few nice days in March will really drive ridership.
Excellent. Thanks.
Aubrey McDermid.
Quick question, Mr. Manager. Jason?
Yes, sir.
In regards to, I know we are on Northwest Twenty-third Street. Have you all given any consideration to Northeast Twenty-third Street?
As far as any--
Four is the night services.
Well, you know, we currently have Route Twenty-three that provides night service as far, at least over to the Capitol area. Probably our next night service would be Route Twenty-two, which I believe serves MLK.
Okay.
Right. So that's, that's where we'd like to go next with night service. The other route that serves Twenty-three going even further, I'm sorry, that serves Twenty-third going even further east would be Route Nineteen. And there's other, other routes in, in that quadrant that I think would be served better with night service than Nineteen.
Okay.
Thank you.
Morning, Mayor and Council. Aubrey McDermid with the Planning Department. I'd like to round out our presentations today with talking about developing a transportation, transportation system that works for everybody. You heard Mr. Winger talk about the street network and the number of sidewalks and trails that we're adding to our system. And as Mr. Fairbush said, this transportation system means that there are multiple options and opportunities for people to get where they need to go. I wanted to update you quickly on the Planning Department and what we might be working on, or what we are working on, to help with the portion of the transportation system that provides alternatives to people getting around in the form of sidewalks and trails, and then our regional planning component. So as the council priority mentions, we're making strides to become more pedestrian and cyclist friendly through better planning, design, and construction of complete streets, sidewalks, and trails. And there's also a growing interest in improving public transportation within Oklahoma City and the central Oklahoma region. And we implement that through creating long-range plans, implementing those plans, and working with our local and regional partners on coordinating our regional transportation planning efforts. So I keep going backwards. Joanna warned me this would happen. I wanted to update you on a couple of plans that are going to be coming forward in the next few months. We've been working for several years to develop our city's first comprehensive pedestrian and bicycle master plan called BikeWalk OKC. So this plan incorporates the old 2007 Trails Master Plan, takes new information into consideration, worked with a lot of different public stakeholders on looking for the best locations in Oklahoma City to build out our sidewalk network and our bicycle network. And we're also looking for opportunities to expand on our trails network. So this master plan will be coming forward soon. We're also working on an update to our comprehensive plan in a section called Livable Streets. You've probably also heard about this, called Complete Streets. This is basically a policy where multiple city departments help implement this as they do their day-to-day business and operations. The comprehensive plan establishes guiding principles for what that means. And as the city's able to implement things like GeoBond projects, and with our new sales tax that was passed recently for street upgrades, we're able to look at the overall system and see where the best locations are to enhance our sidewalk infrastructure, our bicycle infrastructure, as we're doing things like improving streets and resurfacing and restriping them. So this will provide guidance to that implementation. And in the meantime, the Planning Department and Public Works Department are working together to put together a street design manual. So basically, this would be a guide to our contractors and to our designers, who are going to be designing out these street systems in accordance with our plans and our overarching And how we implement these plans are through the voters that passed the GeoBond and our sales tax projects. Our 2017 bond and capital sales tax helps to install those sidewalks identified in the BikeWalk OKC plan. And I wanted to give you a quick overview, since Mr. Winger mentioned this project in the beginning, potentially doubling the number of sidewalks going into the system. The 2017 GeoBond allocated about eighteen point seven million dollars towards sidewalks. How that translates roughly into adding forty-five miles of new sidewalks into our system. The GeoBond also established five point one million dollars going towards trails. We're being very strategic with those expansions of our existing trails network to get more people to access destinations, so three to five miles of trails can be added through that. And then on the on-street bicycle facilities, this can be done as part of identified bicycle facilities, or as streets are being resurfaced or reconstructed, we're implementing that BikeWalk plan, and that could result in up to twenty more miles of bicycle facilities. Plus, we have our sales tax dollars, which can be used for sidewalks, trails, and bicycle facilities as well. So these projects were not listed like GeoBond projects. These projects will be determined through a different process. But in terms of the dollar amounts resulting in a number of lane miles, it could get us up to sixty more miles of sidewalks, up to ten more miles of trails, and up to a hundred more miles of bicycle facilities throughout Oklahoma City. That can make a really significant difference in allowing people to travel where they need to go through these different modes of transportation. We also work very closely with our local partners, that the Planning Department and the Public Transportation and Parking Department work very closely together to coordinate our local initiatives. We actually have a shared position between COCA and Planning, so that we can coordinate any types of grant applications we're going for, or any other types of public transportation, sidewalk enhancement relationships. We also meet quarterly with other municipalities like Norman, Edmund, to coordinate projects and plans with them. And then on a regional level, multiple city departments coordinate with the Association of Central Oklahoma Governments. One of the main initiatives that we're working on right now is through our federal funding allocations, we're working with the Surface Transportation Block Grant for Urbanized Area Program. And this is our, our federal funds that we get to implement transportation initiatives across the state. So with public works and planning at the table, we've been trying to work on a new system for the allocation of those resources, or an upgrade to the system that's been done in the past, so that Oklahoma City can be more competitive and can better leverage those funds that are available through this process. That can make a significant difference in pairing our local resources with our federal resources to build out a transportation system that works for everyone. And then last, we participate on a bicycle pedestrian advisory committee, the B-PAC. And this committee looks at coordinating with other regional efforts to try to enhance and improve our bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure in Oklahoma City. And this committee makes recommendations to the larger group, which is the Intermodal Transportation Policy Committee, and Councilman Pettis serves on that committee as well. So I wanted to update you on some of the things that multiple departments are working on, just to try to enhance the overall transportation system. And collaboration always helps create efficiencies, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Aubrey, how many miles of bike trails do we have today? And how many are we currently funded to have?
I don't know that answer off the top of my head.
If you can get it to me.
But I will absolutely give that to you.
Thank you.
Aubrey, what is the best way, when a, a community identifies a very specific need on sidewalks, what is the best way for them to, I guess, try to raise the flag, to try and see if they can't get involved in that plan?
Well, through the GeoBond, we, we did quite extensive community outreach to identify those needs. And those projects that were recommended by the communities, you know, were put into a system that evaluated how many people would access those sidewalks and gave them a level of priority. Hopefully, those projects that the community told us were needs were funded through the GeoBond. So if it, if it didn't make the list for the GeoBond, there's going to be other mechanisms to do that. Of course, the program that Eric manages is a partnership, a shared partnership, so that private individuals can contribute, and the city matches funds and helps them implement sidewalks. So we have a couple other mechanisms that Eric might be better to respond to, but really the main source of getting those sidewalks where people have asked us for them was the 2017 bond issue.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions for Aubrey? All right.
That's all we have this morning.
All right. Citizens to be heard. Nicholas Brook.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Nick Brook. I own a mathematics consulting firm in Ward Two, near Ingrid's Kitchen. Councilmember Stone, you inadvertently asked a math question just a moment ago. You asked about the chart with the ridership figures. There are twenty-three weekdays in March, but only twenty in February and April. So that's a fifteen percent variance. It was, I'm sure it was inadvertent, but you were looking at a misleading statistic. So anyway, that's my job, but I'm not here to talk about that. I'm here to talk about Magdeel Sanchez. He was killed outside his home by Sergeant Christopher Barnes and Lieutenant Matthew Lindsey of the Oklahoma City Police Department. These police officers came to Mr. Sanchez's home armed with tasers and handguns. They shot pieces of metal out of a gun at a thousand meters per second, not into a piece of paper target, but a live human person, ending his life. He was my neighbor. The Oklahoma City Police Department spokesperson told The Daily Oklahoman that Mr. Sanchez was shot and killed, quote, and this is the quote from the paper, "after he allegedly approached officers with a pipe." What kind of allegation is that? I can walk around the mall, or Walmart, or the city park with a gun holster to my hip if I want to, and nobody's going to shoot me. He has every right to approach a police officer in his front yard, holding a pipe? He should not be executed for that. In a press conference two days later, Chief of Police, Bill City, he told reporters, and this is again a quote from The Oklahoman, he said, quote, "We'll never know exactly why Sanchez confronted officers." Now eyewitnesses report that it was Sergeant Barnes and Lieutenant Lindsey who did the confronting in this situation, and that Mr. Sanchez was the one who wound up dead on his front lawn. I, I don't understand how, I don't know, I'm the only one here, honestly. I don't know why this isn't an item on the agenda. On Sunday, I took my family to a peaceful protest. And, you know, people, they made speeches, and they held signs, and they sang songs, and they were all grieving. Afterwards, they marched together from here to the police headquarters, and they sent a little delegation inside to ask for someone to come out and hear what they had to say, and to maybe offer some, you know, words from the police department about what happened. They refused. Not one person inside, not one of our sworn officers, would come outside and, and face the citizens to talk about what had happened. Not a single one. In light of these facts, any reasonable person has to conclude that the leadership, the leadership of the Oklahoma City Police Department is fundamentally defective from the top down. Now, I went to college to be a mathematician, and when I was in college, I was an assistant manager at Seven-Eleven, and I ran into tons of beat cops. And they're great. I, I really appreciate the people who go out and they do the work. They are very important. But, I mean, bad spokesperson makes an outrageous statement. The police chief himself makes an outrageous statement at a press conference to a reporter, and then he runs a police department where city headquarters is there, and not one person can be bothered to come outside and, and talk to those people. There were a hundred people there. And I'm the only one here, because I'm the only one, I, I own my own business. I can be here on a Tuesday morning, but they can't. They have jobs, like other jobs. It's unacceptable. And Mayor Cornet, you're our elected leader, and I hold you responsible. Councilmember Stone, he was your constituent. You're responsible. But I'm responsible too. It was my tax money that paid for the bullet that ended his life, and the, and the gun, and the tax. And, and while I was out on Sunday deciding to go to a protest march, because that's what I can do, and Mr. Sanchez was dead somewhere, my tax dollars were paying for Sergeant Barnes and Lieutenant Lindsey to remain free men on paid administrative leave. The only reasonable course of action is for the Chief of Police, Bill City, to be relieved of duty. While his public statements are bad enough, there's no clearer condemnation than the fact that he runs a police department where not a single person inside had enough sense to come outside and talk to those people. On a Sunday, when they could be there, they were grieving and upset, and they were ignored by the people who were sworn to protect and serve. It's unacceptable. The city needs to immediately begin a search for a new Chief of Police and give him the power to enact change in the police department. You can't kill someone because they're deaf fifteen feet away from you. Finally, I expect a thorough, credible, but external, external investigation to be conducted around the circumstances surrounding Mr. Sanchez's killing, and that we be regularly informed about the process. Maybe the Citizens Advisory Board for the Police Department is the best way to do that, or maybe you need to come up with a new body for police oversight. I'm not a government expert. You all are. And generally speaking, you guys do a great job. I love Oklahoma City. I am a rabble-rouser for my state representatives. I write them all the time. I write my federal people, but you guys never hear from me, because you do great work. I'm very proud of the Oklahoma City Council. You know how to handle this, but somebody's got to handle it. And whatever we decide, I ask that a representative from the deaf community be included in this oversight. The Citizens Advisory Board, as far as I can tell, has no deaf people on it. Anyway, that is all. Thank you.
Thanks, Nick. All right, we have executive session. We'll be back.
You know how to handle this, but somebody's got to handle it. And whatever we decide, I ask that a representative from the deaf community be included in this oversight. The Citizens Advisory Board, as far as I can tell, has no deaf people on it. Anyway, that is all. Thank you.
Thanks, Nick. All right, we have executive session. We'll be back.